Good morning, everybody. Uh, we're going to open today's Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Before we start, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Also, in the back, somewhere there is an automatic defibrillator for health reasons. We'll ask everybody to stand today. We have the privilege of having the Corrections Honor Guard here today to present the colors. So we ask everybody to stand. Honor Guard. Forward. Forward. Honor Guard. Forward. Prepare to post. Post.
Praise be to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. In two hundred and twelve, we are just as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. On. Left. Right. Forward. Forward. Please be seated. We will call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, May 2nd, 2013. Item B is call for a meeting that's set Tuesday, May 16th. As a date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an item, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization matters. Again, Board of Equalization matters that are not listed officially on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we will go to the items for the Board of Commissioners meeting. We have items D, E, F. Yep. Right. No. I hear you. We have resolutions D, E, F. I don't know in executive session. Is there a motion to approve items D, E, and F? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Seeing no questions. Uh, that includes adjournment as well. Correct. Note that for the record. Motion to approve D, E, F and adjournment. Uh, motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We will now, uh, call to order the Douglas County Board of Corrections meeting. Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan.
Present.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Sorry, Commissioners.
Yep.
There we go. All right. Motion passes six to zero.
Uh, for the record, for the Board, the clerk notified me. I should've said that at the beginning. The machine is running slow today, so if it takes a minute to come up, that's why. Uh, item two, citizens' comments for the Board of Corrections. This is an opportunity for citizens to make comment on Board of Corrections-related items not officially listed on the agenda. Are there any, um, citizens' comments on the Board of Corrections? Seeing none. Go to item three and a report of the Director, Director Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. In front of you, you have, uh, your report for the month of April. Enclosure number one, Administrative Services. Following the 10th month of the fiscal year, we are $936,780 under budget. We have been encumbering funds, uh, allocated to the safety renovations, which will continue into the following fiscal year. There was $852,347 spent on overtime in April. That's a, a significant decrease of approximately $600,000 from the previous month. We project that overtime costs will remain fairly stable from that during May and then drop significantly in June and should be down to next to nothing in July, uh, when our current class of 42 correctional officers is completed with field training in mid-June. And our records department, um, processed nearly $800,000 in bond payments in April. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The Sanctions Center and Transitional Discharge Center placed a total of 21 individuals in community corrections, saving a combined 110 bed days. Work release admitted 11 individuals. House arrest admitted 49. The Reentry Assistance Program, or RAP, admitted 27 individuals and one achieved GED. Um, reentry services, a, a significant portion of the data that I usually report, um, was unavailable due to us. The staff member who compiles it had a death in her family during the week when we needed to submit the, the, the report. So we will retroactively add that in the coming month. And one individual achieved a GED. In pretrial services, um, we are still working with vendors on full, um, integration of data, of the various data systems involved in pretrial release. But the data that I can report today is that 223 individuals were placed on pretrial release. 945 were supervised over the course of the month on pretrial release. 479 of those participated in the 24/7 sobriety program. And overall, during the month, there were 146 individuals monitored via GPS supervision. The GPS supervision theoretically saved us 3,154 jail bed days. A significant savings to the county. Law library utilization during, or via our tablet system continues to be strong. We have been able to reduce the resources dedicated to the traditional law library as a result. Enclosure number three, Compliance. Uh, our regular documentation is being collected for all compliance processes. We are in the final year of our American Correctional Association audit cycle. We did get those audits scheduled. Those, the jail and community corrections will have their audits, uh, from October 30th through November 3rd of this year. Seven officers below the rank of sergeant left employment in April. However, six of those were individuals who did not complete the training academy, which is expected with a group, um, that size. There was only one resignation from a veteran officer who left to pursue a career in homeland security. 29 officers graduated in the legislative chambers on April 7th, and they completed their field training two weeks later. 42 officers are currently in our academy, and they will graduate on May 26th. Including those 42 officers, as of April 30th, we were 103.4% staffed. We will now pause hiring and, and focus our training resources on our existing staff members before scheduling another academy in a few months. Achieving full staffing for the first time in approximately 15 years was the culmination of a fantastic team effort involving many, many individuals. And Katie Sandusky was promoted to the rank of lieutenant in April. Enclosure number five, Population. There were 1,268 admissions. That's an increase of 130 from the previous month. There were 1,271 releases. Our high count was 1,035 and our low count was 986. Our average daily population is 1,011. That's a decrease of 100, or excuse me, of 63. And I want to point out that, to me, that's again evidence that our pretrial release supervision program is working and saving the county money on operational dollars in the jail. There were 63 custodial sanctioned bed days. That's a decrease. The US Marshal population increased, and I wanted to mention that because we've been successful in keeping our population, local population in check, we reached out to the Marshals, or actually, they reached out to us and asked if they could house more than what we're contractually, contractually obligated to provide. Uh, there are currently around 25, uh, inmates over what we're contractually obligated to provide them in terms of the number of beds. So... And I've authorized them to go up some more from there because now we have the staff to, to run those housing units. Those 25 additional beds filled, if we maintain those, will rev, generate a million dollars in revenue for the county during the upcoming year. The felony pretrial population decreased. The misdemeanor pretrial population decreased slightly. Probation violations remained stable. 17% of our population were between the ages of 18 to 24. 66% of our population were minorities, and that unfortunately is an increase of 2%. 16% of our population were female and 17% of our population were homeless or nearly homeless. Enclosure number six, Medical. There were 1,442 intake screenings. There were 388 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 23 times for emergent medical care. 13 of those were by 911. There were five hospital admissions, which resulted in 14 days of hospitalization. There were 46 off-site medical appointments. And COVID vaccine clinics, clinics continue to be offered regularly to the incarcerated population. Enclosure number seven, Mental Health. There were 148 initial psychiatric assessments, 223 initial mental health assessment, assessments. There were 141, uh, mental health infirmary placement or suicide precautions. There were 194 individuals placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal, withdrawal protocols. There were 23 Board of Mental Health referrals, which is the highest that I can recall us ever having in a month. And there was one, uh, transfer to Lincoln Regional Center. And in eight, in, well, actually, this, this data lags a month. In March, our, our 44% of our population was diagnosed with a mental illness. Enclosure number eight, Security Operations and Honor Guard. Our crisis negotiation team was deployed eight times. Seven of those deployments result were successfully de-escalated without having to use physical force. Our Correctional Emergency Response Team, or CERT. Uh, there were three deployments for cell extractions, which were completed with minimal force. Uh, quarterly CERT training was completed focusing on riot response scenarios. There were 11 searches of housing units conducted. Contraband recovered included items used for tattooing. There was one shank. There was hoarded medication and ingredients attempting to ferment alcohol. Our Honor Guard participated in the services for Mills County Corrections Officer at the request of that officer's family. Other noteworthy items. Work on our safety, uh, facility-wide safety project continues. When concluded, all housing units with a top tier will have netting installed, and all top bunks are being replaced. The male and female infirmaries have been temporarily, temporarily relocated to housing units where that project, or to, to where that project has been completed. And we are now working on the renovations of the infirmaries themselves. This project will continue, uh, and the renovation of the infirmaries will be done approximately June 1st. This overall project will continue from pretty much the rest of 2023. Preparation for our role as the host agency for the 2023 American Jail Association National Conference and Jail Expo is ramping up significantly. That conference will be held, uh, at the CHI Health Convention Center, May 20th through the 24th. And lastly, Bill Young was hired as our Wellness and Retention Coordinator. During his tenure as a correctional officer for Douglas County, Bill became nationally known in the field of corrections for his passion and knowledge for the well-being of correctional officers. Bill has offered, authored two books on the subject and is currently writing a third. He even appeared on Dr. Phil. He is an invited speaker around the nation on these matters, and we are very fortunate to have him coordinate, or have him present in Douglas County. Bill will help coordinate activities relating to our peer support team, respond to crisis situations, develop a variety of programs and resources to improve the physical and emotional health of our staff. Improved employee recognition processes and the implementation of even of yoga for first responders have already begun during yoga, or yogas, Bill's brief time in this position. In addition, Bill has assisted several staff who have experienced crises by setting up referrals and appointments to needed services and sometimes even accompanying those staff members at those appointments when needed. Before I bring Bill up and let you hear from him about his vision, I'm going to show you a video of, um, which features Bill and describes the need for agencies to respond to the toll that working in the corrections profession can take.
The assumption isn't that we're all on the same page with the same language, the same training, the same background, the same life experience. We have differences. But that's what makes change possible, because we can cross our differences to solve our pressing problems. For far too long, the culture in corrections has been, you just suck it up. You don't talk about it.
As a union advocate, I band-aided the unidentified and misdiagnosed effects of stress, trauma, and crisis in myself and in my fellow officers. For context, I've been fired, suspended, assaulted, gassed, tased, intervened in fights, stabbings, riots. I've seen loss of life. I almost lost my wife, my family, and myself.
My family's story is something that I wish could say was rare, but unfortunately tragedies like this affect corrections families far more than the general public realizes. My father, Michael Mellon, retired a captain from Suze Baranowski Supermax Prison in Massachusetts at the age of 45 after 22 years of working for the Department of Corrections. He only lived about 18 months after he retired, and he killed himself. I was 19 years old at the time, and my brother was 17.
Commissioners, these stories are not unique. They're not anomalous. Unfortunately, the testimonies that you hear today are the truth and reality of countless correctional officers across the globe. We are fighting an enemy that we didn't even know existed, a threat that we didn't know we were facing, and we need some help.
How do we take a system that's just broken for everyone? What do we do with that? I ask that you just ponder and think about what's possible.
Staff wellness programs should begin at the academy and continue through retirement.
Agencies must have a pre-genesis through Exodus, awareness and responsibility to the holistic well-being of its employees. They must intentionally, but sagaciously dispel the stigma surrounding self-care. And that's going to require partnerships because we, as corrections, have to acknowledge that the silos and the walls that we operate within and behind got us here. And the mental and behavioral health is not our strength.
Trying to do things preventatively, equipping, that's one of the things we're doing with both families and staff. Making them aware of what's coming, what to expect, how to read the roadmap that they're on.
You could be stabbed, but also the threat of being stabbed every day for your entire career can also change you as well.
If you send somebody to a toxic spill in their little sandals and shorts, hey, that's not right. They need a hazmat suit. Staff are being thrown in the middle of all kinds of traumatic situations with absolute no protection, no protection whatsoever. They're just like, deal with it, another day in paradise and come back tomorrow and don't complain about being put in the same unit where the floor was covered in blood and you're having nightmares about it. Sorry, you're gonna have to go back there and work there, and it's not my problem. You signed up for this.
This is the culture of corrections, particularly in the United States, that is very toxic.
Prisons cannot be places where officers or inmates have to check their humanity at the door.
That's part of the problem, is that we don't recognize humanity in this.
We think that the enemy is the population that we supervise, when in reality, the enemy is the correctional environment in its entirety. Our enemy isn't just the fights and the felons, it's the culture. It's the colorless, cold, and unforgiving concrete that confines not only the incarcerated, but us as well.
There's not a bright line between incarcerated individuals, from what you're telling me, right? And corrections officers.
The analogy is this, they're, they're the smokers. We get the secondhand smoke, but at the end of the day, we all get cancer.
So in order to truly help ourselves, we will in turn help those who are incarcerated as well. This kind of has a ripple effect.
This isn't a problem that you should have to treat. It's not even a problem that you should try to prevent. Why do we have the system that we have?
Until we transform prisons from human warehouses to places of accountability and rehabilitation, I'm afraid we're going to continue the insanity going forward.
I'm not here to tell you that the US should copy the Norwegian or Nordic model, but it has some valid points that I have seen firsthand. In the past 70 years, we have gone from on-the-job training to a two-year paid academy training. The staffing ratio is 1.1 staff to every inmate. Corrections in Norway is anything but flawless, but the expectations and conditions of incarcerated have changed, and we are safer and more satisfied as a result.
We've heard that we have a broken system.
But we ask you not to give up on us.
I never thought it would be sitting in front of you telling this story, but if I can prevent this tragedy from happening to another family, to another little girl that really needed her father, that's my goal.
The sanctity of these moments we have shared and the stories we have heard need to stay with us and inspire us as we go forth on our journey.
The secret's out, and the silence is broken, and we have to act.
Without action, without follow-through, intentions to address the mental health and wellness of correctional officers are meaningless.
Together, we can change this system. We all have the right for holistic safety. That's creating communities where we all feel protected and whole and resilient. But it's going to take all of us to unite and have some of those difficult conversations and to realize that even though we come from divergent pathways, we all want the same thing. To be safe and to be well, and together we can do that.
All right, Commissioners, with that, I'm going to bring Bill up and have him, uh, tell you a little bit about, um, his vision for this role and, uh, why it's so critical for us, uh, to have his position and to really work on changing that culture and, and replacing it with a culture of health and wellness.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Bill Young, Wellness Coordinator, Douglas County Corrections. Wellness and mental health and self-care are buzzwords now. Everybody's talking about them. Corporate America's doing, you know, activities and fun runs and things. And the correctional, uh, space is just now starting to see how important it is. And, and the difference between what we need to do for our staff and what, you know, say, Amazon or somebody else needs to do is that our efforts are a matter of life and death. See, when somebody comes in the academy, we prepare them. We just add a new higher class for all the physical dangers that they're going to encounter. We teach them how to stand, how to hold their hands up. We teach them that inmates could lie to them, try to hurt them, manipulate them. We prepare them very well to do the job. What Corrections has forgot to do this whole time is to prepare them to live after those things. After the fights, after the medical emergencies and the attempted suicides and the completed suicides. The, the, the toll that it wreaks on your personal life outside of here, outside of uniform, is tremendous. Uh, the stats are ridiculous. I'm not really a stats guy. I'm not going to bore you with that. But staff wellness in the correctional space is not about keeping somebody happy so they show up for work. It's about letting a person fit, live their career, get through their career with their head, heart, and household intact. It's about keeping their marriages healthy. It's about having a good relationship with their kids. It's about letting them feel accomplished for what they've done and not destroyed by what they had to go through. And so that's what we're trying to do here, by giving them information, by giving them acknowledgement, and then through intentional actions that are specific to the first responder community, to let them know that what they do is dangerous, what they do is important, and that the toll that it can take on their emotional and psychological well-being is just as serious, if not more, than their physical safety. And, and so that's, uh, you know, like, like Director Myers said, I, I go around and, and speak at other agencies, and this is a very taboo thing to talk about, right? Because we're supposed to be tough. We have to be. We can't see something and then cry. We can't, you know, stop and not act. So once you start talking about this, now you have to deal with it. And we're very fortunate, uh, at Douglas County that we have leadership in place that sees the importance of that, that is acting on that. And so what we're doing here is actually very revolutionary. Having a position like this, having a peer support team even, having this conversation is, is huge. Um, and so I appreciate your guys' support. I appreciate Director Myers' support and his, in administration, uh, moving forward. This is, again, not about staff retention. It's about saving and salvaging the lives of staff that are willing to die for the mission statement. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And Bill or I are ready for your questions.
Going once. Uh, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Is this just on this item or on your report?
Uh, all of the above.
Okay. So, um, I want to focus in on a couple of good news items real quick. The average daily population is down to 1,011, which is, I think you reflect 63 below last month on page two. And, um, you indicate that this is due to the cumulative effect of the pretrial release and diversion programs.
That, that's the most concrete thing I can point to.
That's, that's very good, and thank you for that. One thing that we don't have in here, and I think maybe we've talked about this before, is an average length of stay is an average length of stay number. That would be good going forward. We do get that in some of the information that we receive from the youth center. Gives us an idea of how long people are around. I did note that the population is overwhelmingly, I think it's 77% on page 29, pre-trial felony population, or holding people awaiting trial on felonies.
Yeah, Commissioner, that's actually an improvement.
Okay, so inside the population, we have people on misdemeanor charges and doing time on misdemeanor charges, and then people, the overwhelming number, waiting trial on felonies. These are discrete populations. They're in separate courts. It would be good to know the average length of stay of each because they're different. Very good news on the staffing. I don't think I've ever seen this since I've been here. On page seven, we have authorized staff for the entire department of 494 and on hand of 495. And the corrections officers, the key component of that, authorized 349, on hand 361. I don't think I've ever seen us meet or exceed our authorized level, and that's excellent because I think that ties in directly to what we were just talking about in terms of the stress on individual officers. It also ties into the overtime question of having adequate staff so that people don't have to work 60 hours a week.
Absolutely.
That's great. I mean, kudos to you and your staff for making that happen. I know you've worked on that a long time. The question, though, that I don't understand on overtime is on page eight, I think the hours, it looks like, are up, but on page one, and I might be wrong on these pages, but
I can explain it.
The dollar amount is down and the hours appear to be up.
So this is something that our report needs to, because I caught that same thing, that the graph didn't reflect the numbers that I got. They're pulled from two different data sources. The county, as you know, pays us in arrears, and so evidently, the graph is linked to the payroll data and we have another system called Telestaff which can calculate more current, you know, real-time data. So that's the difference. We're gonna work to fix that because I caught that same thing, that the graph didn't match the numbers.
That would be good to have that reconciled. The average daily population leads to the question of vacant beds that we've dealt with before. And last time I toured the facility, maybe three weeks ago or so, there were 196 vacant beds. And I understand that you're moving some things around. You indicated the infirmary is moving into one of these vacant units. 25 beds or something like that.
So, yeah, so we have a male
One minute.
Our infirmary unit is actually divided into three parts. There's a unit, part of it's for men, part of it's for women, and there's sort of a vulnerable population area. Those three units have been split, have moved into two of our bigger housing units for the six weeks that it takes to do renovations on the infirmaries.
So the infirmary area is being renovated and they're going to where those screens were installed?
Correct, yep.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, real quick, your mic turned off. If we can get his mic back on. There we go.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Then they'll go back?
They'll go back, yep. First part of June.
And we're gonna run out of time here, so we'll come back, but I'm interested in your observation that you're gonna be asking the marshals and the feds. We'll come back.
Thank you. Commissioner Boy.
First, Director Myers, I just wanna say it's impressive the work you're doing as far as getting staffing up and then you're really going bold with making sure that the staff's mental health is taken care of. And I think it's important to note that whenever staff feels okay, when they're in a decent place, then that spills over to how inmates do too. So I think that really it's a win-win. And so, but to hire somebody with these credentials to help with wellness and retention is really a coup. And to see such a huge commitment to that, I think, really gets to the bottom of what's needed in the correction system altogether. So I appreciate all the work you've been doing. I've watched it since I've been on the board for the past couple of years and it's very impressive to me. So we're lucky we have a mental health specialist in your position. So thanks for that. And then just some other questions, just looking at the data and everything. We always talk about, like, there's a 17% homeless population. And then I was wondering if there are services to help these folks get into homes or get into stable situations after they are released?
There are. We have a team of staff called reentry specialists, which are basically our social workers for the jail. And they coordinate with a variety of service providers on a, basically creating individualized plans for folks. Sometimes with some of this population, the turnover is really rapid. You know, if somebody comes in on a very minor charge of trespassing, which is oftentimes what the homeless population will come in on, it presents some challenges because they may only be with us for a matter of, you know, a couple of days. So it's sometimes difficult to even know that they're there before they're getting out and to get a plan in place. But we do the best we can with that. And pre-COVID, we had a, one of the reentry specialists was working as a, like a triage, you know, discharge. We did evening hours, so after courts, this person would try and do what they could on the, you know, during the release process to set up services, the place to go, a ride to somewhere, you know, people to call on behalf of the individual. That service is gonna be restarting shortly.
Good, good deal. Also, you mentioned pre-trial release, which of course has been a nice addition. Do we know at this point, out of those folks who are released, are we tracking how many of them actually violate the terms of their release?
Yes, and I, you know, I didn't include that data in this report, but we did at the Criminal Justice Committee meeting last week. There was a PowerPoint that had some of that data. Now, it's not, if you recall, I also mentioned that we are still working on getting all of the data systems integrated and not everything, not every data point is available to us yet on a report-out basis. But we do know the arrests and the warrants and so forth. Knowing when people have just gone through the program successfully is actually the data that's difficult for us to get because we're not synced up to the courts yet. So there's times that somebody's court case may have been resolved and we have to find that out manually rather than getting that information pushed to us. So that sort of, you know, hopefully that, I won't be saying that too many more months, but that's in the hand of the vendors to integrate the systems.
Good deal. Then one last thing is, you noted the increased admissions to the Board of Mental Health or referrals. Do you know what that's about? Is it more coordination or?
I don't have a good answer for that. You know, it's been trending up and this, you know, just is the highest number that I can recall reporting to you. And I think it's a reflection of just what we're dealing with. You know, it's interesting that we've accomplished some population reductions, but you can tell that the mentally ill population is still an issue because even if they're not increasing in volume, they're increasing as a percentage because the volume's going down. And so that's the populations that seems to be remaining stuck. So we're still dealing with that.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Frey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Myers, thanks for the report, as usual, very in-depth. Do you, you know, about the last four times we had a Criminal Justice Subcommittee public meeting last week, and about the last four meetings that we've had, you've been generous enough to get right in there and talk about pre-trial release. So I appreciate those reports and those meetings. In case people, you know, based on those, based on some of those discussions, or at least recent ones, I know the collaboration between corrections, I wanted to thank you because I know the collaboration between corrections and the Douglas County Sheriff's Department and Omaha Police Department has been quite productive. So I appreciate that. I mean, it's a tough balancing act, right? I mean, doing what you do and then trying to deal with law enforcement. For verifiable reasons, it needs to be done, so thank you. In case people weren't tuned in, and most people probably weren't, could you speak a little bit in regard to the pre-trial services? Could you speak a little bit to the process surrounding, for example, 945 individuals being supervised on pre-trial release? Can you generalize how, what that supervision looks like? I mean, are there three prongs to it? There's an ankle monitor, you guys are, they have to report in? I mean, tell folks what that kind of looks like at a high level.
So individuals are assessed before they go to court using an instrument, a validated instrument called the Public Safety Assessment. And that information, that generates three scores, and those three scores are the risk of failing to appear, the risk of committing a new crime while on pre-trial release. And then there's a flag. It's not necessarily a score, but it's a flag for the potential for a new violent criminal act while on pre-trial release. All of those scores are given to the judge. Then those scores are translated into a supervision level, and there's four levels of supervision. If you're on level one, you really don't need much from us, you know, typically. That's a pretty low-level person. Most of the people who are on pre-trial release are on that sort of administrative level where really all they might need from us is us to send them a text message reminding them of court. And it keeps ramping up from levels two, three and four to where there's check-ins, increased frequency of check-ins. There are the 24/7 sobriety program, which is, I think, the most intensive drug and alcohol testing protocol that is done anywhere. And then also the GPS supervision. And it could be any or all of those that are added by the courts to provide the supervision based upon what sort of risks that the person presents when they appear in court.
Okay, so, I can't see how much time I have. I'm sure he'll let me know. So anecdotally, you get an individual, the person fired five shots, took a 9mm and fired five shots into a home. You put the risk assessment together for that particular individual pre-adjudication. The judge looks at that information, sets the bond based on the risk assessment and, you know, what the judge knows about the particular case. And then you guys, for lack of a better way to describe it, are forced into, let's say the bond is set at a million dollars. They get 10% of that, the guys out on the street. You're going to supervise that particular individual pretty intensely, as intensely as you possibly can, right? And that's the bottom line.
That's correct.
And that means a variety of those things you were talking about.
Yep.
You guys can't go out and check on this individual. Who would be doing that?
So we would have the individual report to us or in certain cases, depending upon how risky we feel it is to our staff to go out, they could go out. But we would also, in some of those cases, wanna partner with law enforcement to go do those checks with us so that it's safer for everyone involved.
Okay, the point is you know where these folks are, right?
Correct, yes.
All right, well, Director Myers, thanks again for the information, and we'll talk more. And good luck next week. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Just picking up where we left off, so you indicated that in conversations with the US Marshals, you're interested in them providing us with more marshal holds possibly because of the low average daily population. What do we have right now? I think it's in here someplace.
Don't hold me to this exactly, but I believe there is around 122 federal.
And in your discussions with them, have you put a number on that increase? I think you might have mentioned 25.
Yeah, so they, we're contractually obligated to provide them 95 beds, so we're currently a little over 25 above that. I have just recently told them, you know, given our staffing and our bed space, that if they wanted to go up to around 140, we could do that and kind of see where things shake out over the course of the next few weeks. And then part of that, we also have some limits because of the renovations or closing one or two housing units at a time.
So we get a per diem on these inmates. What is that?
$120 per day.
And will that change?
No. We entered into a new contract. We got a significant increase in our per diem a couple of years back, and I think it was a four-year contract, so I think that'll
And that contract would have contained this 95 beds?
Correct.
So if we're asking for an adjustment on the 95 beds, can't we ask for an adjustment on the per diem?
So the contract language, I mean, I suppose we could. I don't know that they would entertain that.
I guess I go to that because everything has gone up over the last two years. The per diem at 120 has gotta be way inadequate. If I did the population of your facility and divided that by the budget of your facility, it's gonna come out to more than 120 per diem. So what I'm saying is, if we're renegotiating this contract, and it sounds like we are, why wouldn't we renegotiate the per diem?
Well, we aren't in renegotiations. Our contract language says we have to provide at least 95 beds. And so we've, you know, they have asked if they could have more. And because if I, if we have a housing unit that has 64 beds and we have 56 inmates in it, we can fill that up to 64, and I'm not gonna have to bring in more staff to do that. So that is revenue that's realized.
I understand, and we're not arguing about that. You're gonna get compensated at whatever number of holds you have for them at $120 a day. I'm saying if we're going to accommodate more holds, which is a change in the terms and conditions of the existing agreement, why wouldn't we visit at least the per diem costs, which have gone up clearly in the last two years?
We, I can certainly reach out to the marshals and see if they're willing to engage in that conversation.
That might be something that you wanna think about. The information that you have on the mental health is good. It's 44% of the inmate population diagnosed with presenting some form of mental health condition. Does that include those inmates that present with drug and alcohol addiction problems?
There may be some over, there likely is some overlap, Commissioner.
I didn't see a specific breakout for substance abuse addiction.
Yeah, because I don't know that we have the capacity in terms of to give you an accurate number on that.
You do have in-house currently a substance abuse addiction treatment program where inmates can volunteer to participate.
We do. We have actually two. They're both staffed by the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center. One is in
One, I understand that. I'm just trying to get to the numbers there. The last I heard, there were like 12 people of this thousand-plus people enrolled in that.
So the one inside the jail just started, so it's just growing. We only have one staff member in place so far. The grant provides up to four.
That'd have to be a much larger group of people incarcerated with drug and alcohol problems than 12.
There are.
Okay. Maybe that's something we could look at, expanding as well. We've got, you know, vacant space and we've got a lot of need. It might be something to look at. I appreciate your reports. If we could get that going forward on the average length of stay, that's a metric that's essential to us in budgeting calculations. And I don't know, maybe you do, the average length of stay of the pre-adjudicated higher than the average length of stay of the sentenced misdemeanor population?
Time. Yes.
It is, okay.
Seeing no more requests, one question on mic. Who will Bill report to directly?
He will report to Captain Leon Valkier, who is our captain of staff development and training. So Bill is considered part of our leadership team at this point. And we'll be developing a whole array of programs for our staff, which I do believe, even though Bill didn't wanna emphasize the cost savings, but training new people costs us money. And I know Bill has already helped people through some crises and helped them maintain their employment. and helped them maintain their employment with the county. And before I go, I would want to remind everybody, you know, it is Corrections Officers Week this week. We have activities at the jail all week long. If you wish, we're doing a fundraiser for Bryce Hattery. He's one of our officers, been dealing with a very serious health issue for quite some time. You can come, you know, you can come throw a pie at my face this afternoon for a fee, if you wish, and the funds will go to Bryce and his family. Thank you.
Their motion to adjourn, the Board of Corrections. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll now call the roll for the Board of Commissioners meeting. Mr. Clerk?
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here, Item A is the, is Item One is minutes and claims. A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, May 9th, 2023. What's the will of the board?
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes six to zero.
Item Two is consent agenda. There are five items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Kavanaugh, then Commissioner Friend.
Just a couple of informational questions for the record on Items A and B. These are amendments to the Juvenile Service Agreement with Douglas County. A is with Douglas County to mutually house juveniles at Sarpy County. And Item B is the reverse, with Sarpy County to mutually house juveniles at Douglas County. And I've spoken briefly with Ms. Havicati regarding this. Counselor, could you explain a little bit to us about this bilateral agreement that we have with Sarpy County to house children?
Sure, a little bit of background. Both of these contracts, current contracts that we have...
Kim, could you identify yourself?
Oh, sorry, Kim Havicati, Deputy County Administrator. Both of the contracts we currently have with Sarpy County are due to expire June 30th of 2023. This is an amendment extending both of those contracts through September 30th of 2023. The first contract is if Douglas County would house any youth in Sarpy County Detention Facility. The big difference with Sarpy County Detention Facility compared to Douglas County Youth Center is it is a staff-secure facility, not a detention facility. So, we would have to have one of the judges here in Douglas County order a staff-secure type of placement. Currently, there are no youths in Sarpy County, and I don't think there have been.
Okay, could you, because I don't think the general public understands what that distinction is. I'm not sure I do. What does that mean?
The difference between a staff-secure facility and a detention facility is a staff-secure facility under Nebraska statutes has to have an egress door. It can be a delayed egress door, but it has to have an egress door, while a detention facility does not. It's just a lower level under statutes of care.
So, this is a back-and-forth, Sarpy County kids to our youth center, Douglas County kids to their detention center. And currently, which way does that swing? Are we receiving children from Sarpy County? Are they receiving children from Douglas County?
Currently, we have three Sarpy County youths in our facility, Commissioner. And pretty much this past year, we've had an average of two to four for the past year from Sarpy County. Most of them are charged in their adult criminal system.
Okay. And Sarpy County have Douglas County kids?
They have, not in the past year, no.
Okay. Now, you heard our discussion with Corrections about the per diem that we have with the U.S. Marshals. Is there a per diem on this, depending on who's housing the children?
There is a per diem, and when, for any youth with Sarpy that are kept here in Douglas County, we did increase that per diem. I believe now it's three sixty-four, three sixty-five a day. I cannot remember, I don't have it in front of me, Commissioner, but yes. There was an increase.
And is it the same on the other side? If we send children to Sarpy County, is it the same three sixty-five a day?
No, it is not, Commissioner. The main reason being is they are not a detention facility, so it is a lower rate because it is a staff-secure facility.
Good. Do you know what that number is?
I want to say it's three twenty, something along that, but I do not know for sure I can get that, Commissioner.
Okay. You know, this is important because we're getting a hundred and twenty bucks from the feds to hold their holds at our corrections center, and we're getting three hundred plus from Sarpy County to hold their children at our detention center, at our youth center. I'm just pointing that out because detention is detention. Costs are costs. And it might be something to think about. This is a extension of a contract from, if I read this right, January 1st, 23 to September 30th, 23?
That's correct. Originally, the contract was from January 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2023. And then, this is an extension, now extending it through September 30th.
Okay. These are kind of short terms. Why are we extending it such short terms?
One minute.
It more has to do with the new facility and when the new facility will be open and the number of beds at the new facility, Commissioner.
So, the new facility being the kid's jail is not going to open. Is that right?
Correct.
And it doesn't have the capacity of Douglas County Youth Center, bed-wise?
Current Douglas County Youth Center has a ninety-six-bed capacity. The new Douglas County Youth Center will have a sixty-four-bed capacity.
And the average daily population of the Douglas County Youth Center currently, it usually bubbles up around eighty, eighty-one. Do you know what it is today?
I do. Do you want with or without?
I want all-in.
Okay, all-in. When you look at all-in, it's eighty-one today, and that includes five youths from outside of Douglas County.
And those would be the three in Sarpy?
Three from Sarpy, one U.S. Marshal, and one from Lancaster, yes.
And are the U.S. Marshal holds in our...
Time. Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had talked to some staff a little bit before this on a couple of occasions, and I'm still, it's not hard to do. I'm still a little bit cloudy on, not just why we're dealing with this right at the moment. I'm assuming, I'm assuming we're dealing with it because there are other contracts that we have related to similar subject matter. In other words, the marshal probation and everything else that require, that the contracts require different things. There are different severability clauses in them. I guess what I'm asking is, and I don't exactly know where Commissioner Kavanaugh was going, but what I'm, I wouldn't pretend to know unless we discussed it further. From my standpoint, what I'd like to, what I'd like to talk about is the sufficient amount of timing. Right now, we have, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we have a situation that would, right now, would require the closing of DCYC on January 1st of 2024. I don't know why we don't reflect the date for Sarpy and other entities that are utilizing similar contractual relationships with us to reflect those changes that we make. So, I guess what I'm asking is, I, we can, I'd like to pull it off consent and vote on it because I think we could extend. Here's my point. September 30th, I think, is pretty short-term. Sarpy County doesn't have any other solutions to this issue, and I think we all know that. What I'd like to do is talk about possibility of actually providing leeway or provide a longer runway for a partner county that's got, you know, issues as well. So, that would be my contention, is we take it off and maybe discuss it just a little bit more. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
But can I ask, I'm lost on the discussion. This is, they knew a year out. Actually, this is about the third extension we've given them. So, September is the date because in November, you're going to start the transition. So, that, once transition starts, that puts us in a whole other realm. So, transition could be complete before then. And so, September is a safe enough time to prepare for the transition.
Can I?
You know, you still got any time?
Yeah, okay, oh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the only way I'd respond to that, it's a point well-taken. The only way I'd respond to that is, I'm proposing the idea of we actually extend it a little bit more, mainly because, A, we don't necessarily take a tremendous amount of Sarpy County youth. It's, I would guess the average, based on my research of this or at least listening to the discussions, we're talking about one or two youth a month, maybe three, at tops four. I just think it would be cleaner if we correlated it with, you know, January 1st, 2024 timeframe. And I know we've talked about it, so I don't mean to seem a little...
Well, if you're doing it, you'll be laying it over because I don't know if we can extend it without their agreement.
Okay.
They sent it to us, proposed that. And so, excuse me, so for us to amend, I think we would need to wait and have conversation with them. We would have, you have to take it off, and then you have to talk to them. Because I'm assuming they, this is what they sent to us. We agreed after some conversations last weekend in this session, and so, I wouldn't feel comfortable in amending this without laying it off and talking to them and having the legal people talk to them instead of us just unilaterally doing it and sending it back to them. So, if you want to do that, then you would have to, we would have to pull it, lay it over a week, and have that conversation with them.
I appreciate that input. What I would like to, I don't know what everybody else feels about it. I would like to pull it off and delay this, maybe, maybe two weeks so we can have those discussions. Is that enough time?
You can pull it off, then you can have the vote to see if the Board wants to delay it two weeks and go from there.
Okay, that's what I would like to do, Mr. Chair.
Then, we, then, I'll ask for unanimous consent to pull A and B and then vote on C, D, and E. And if nobody objects, we can just do that by unanimous consent. There ain't no objection, wait for the clerk.
Do you want me to specify, Mr. Chair, that we're laying A and B over for two weeks or just approve C through?
Right now, we're just amending the consent agenda, approve C, D, and E.
Okay.
I don't know where the Board is on the layover, so we're going to do a separate vote on A and B.
Okay.
You got it?
Almost.
Okay.
A and B.
Well, really, Commissioner Friend, I would probably ask for B because A is us to them.
Commissioners, there's no request button to speak here that I can press, but I do want to have a comment.
Come on while he's...
Okay. If the Board's requesting us...
Patrick, can you identify yourself?
Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator. If the Board is requesting a layover of one or two weeks, staff would need some direction on what we're supposed to do in that interim. The purpose of having it be September.
Well, just hold on, Patrick. Let's handle this, and then when we get to the item, I will let you talk on it when it gets pulled, when it's separated. So, right now, are you fine with doing just B? Because A is us sending to them, not them sending. B is them sending to us.
Which we don't do a tremendous amount of, Mr. Chair, correct? But here's the thing, just for the sake of clarity and consistency, I just assume doing both together.
That's fine. You ready for the vote?
I am, Mr. Clerk.
We're voting on C, D, and E. No, C, D, and E is approved.
Motion passes six to zero.
Then, right now, I'm assuming that you are motioning, Commissioner Friend, for A and B to be held over a week. And then, is there a second to his motion? Well, right now, I need to know if there's a second to A and B. If A and B doesn't get a second, then wait now. Okay, there's a second by Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
And this is to Ms. Havicati. The terms here seem to be last January 1st and next September 30th. Is that right? Am I reading this correctly?
It was January 1st of this year. There was a prior contract.
Okay, so are we in expiration? Has that contract concluded January 1st, 23?
No. It concludes June 30th of 2023.
Okay, so there was an interim that's not reflected here to June 30th, and we're continuing that to September 30th? The other question that I was going to ask was the per diem from Sarpy County, I think you indicated, is three sixty-five a day per child?
That's what I believe, yes.
And we have some U.S. Marshals as well. Is that the same, is the per diem the same for everybody? Everybody pays us three sixty-five?
No, no.
What do the Marshals pay?
I would have to pull that contract. I don't have it, but it is substantially less than that. Maybe Mark LaFlore is also on, Commissioner. Maybe Mark knows the exact amounts. I know that probation, state probation, right now, under their old contract was two eighty-seven.
Okay, yeah.
But we can check with Mark LaFlore to see what the U.S. Marshal contract amount is.
Okay.
Thanks, Kim. Brad and I are here. Yeah, the U.S. Marshal's contract is, I think it expires the end of this month, but it's at two fifty-five a day.
I'm sorry, say again, two fifty-nine?
Two fifty-five, two fifty-five a day.
Okay, so the Marshal's at two fifty-five. The Sarpy County's at three sixty-five, and probation is at what?
Four hundred.
I have difficulty hearing.
Probation is at four hundred.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Friend, you got one more opportunity if you want to say something on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it. Commissioners, I, my goal here is certainly not to throw a monkey... What I'm looking for is clarity and consistency. Again, it's redundant, but to reiterate, currently, the Board has made the determination that January 1st, 2024, will be the day that DCYC closes. That is the current understanding by the entire Board. It was actually done in public forum. All I'm trying to do is say, look, all of this transition with Sarpy County can occur during that timeframe. If we stay with that mindset and that thought process and that plan, then the transition of Sarpy County youth can happen simultaneously, right? It doesn't mean it solves our overcrowding problem. It just means that it gives our neighbor to the South, who's got financial issues as well, and they're staring down the barrel of actually trying to house a certain amount of youth that they don't have the capacity for. If they go out and build a building, how long, who knows how long that would take? I guess my point is, for consistency purposes, based on the current strategy and the current plan, we give them till January 1st, 2024. That's where the discussion is right now. That's the reason I did this. It doesn't mean it's a be-all, end-all. It doesn't mean that we're satisfying a bunch of other problems and practical issues, Mr. Chair. I just think that it gives us more time to dialogue about this stuff and, you know, work through what I would consider a specific problem, not just for Sarpy County, but for us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just before the vote happens, let me just note that you're going to need the three months because you extended it out to January. A kid could come in on December 31st of that. And so, then, that kid's there until they go through that process. The point of September was to allow, if a kid came in there on September... The point of September was to allow, if a kid came in there on September, was to allow that kid to get through and make their way out. Is there a guarantee? No, but definitely, if a kid was to come in on December thirty-first of twenty, then twenty twenty-three, then we're gonna be open longer than that, because you gotta do something with that kid. That's a that's a slot, or slots, or whatever comes in.
Mr. Chair, you make a good practical argument, I would add to that practical argument that that is, that is a symptom of a problem that we have, not just with Sarpy County kids, but with Douglas County kids. I mean, this, I don't know what the population was this way, here's what I'm saying.
When and all you-
This is a bigger bigger picture discussion. Transition of Sarpy County youth is not, I mean, it's it's almost stepping on mice and there's elephants running over our head. I think there's a practical problem, Mr. Chair. And and that being said, I think we're taking away a little bit of Sarpy County's practical problem by theoretically delaying this. I mean, I don't, I, you know. I'm not asking you to agree with me.
And I don't.
Commissioners, before before you do vote, I I do have to finish, I would like to finish my comments.
Yeah, and I was and I was gonna speak to, I was gonna speak to administration's question. And, uh, Patrick, I'd be happy to yield, I mean, weigh in. If, can he?
No, no, you. But if you, if, are you through with your time?
I'm through with my time.
Okay. Patrick, answer the question, then I'll go to Commissioner Morgan.
So, Commissioner Rogers, you stated the problem with the timing, uh, but we need, we simply need direction. If the vote is to be, to lay it over, we need as part of that motion to do, give the staff direction to specifically do what?
Let the vote happen, and then there's a contract negotiation in his accession, and I think if if the vote succeeds, then we'll give direction there. Commissioner Morgan.
Two things. I like consistency, not that I always practice it, but I wanna try to at least have it. I don't like the idea that we just see, hey, can Commissioner Garcia pay more than Mike Friend, and maybe Maureen can pay a little more than I can, and we have all these different rates. I'd like to know at some point, not now, but let's find out what our cost is per person, and have a rate that's the same for everybody in being fair. And that's just me speaking as one commissioner. The the second thing I'd like to say is, I think we should, at this point, if there's a motion, I'm gonna support it. I think Sarpy County oughta be able to stay till January first, and I'm not certain exactly what's gonna take place. We've got a lot of things going on and concerns, and not just by Sarpy County, ourselves, and so on. And also, uh, the sheriff and the police officers, and we're dealing with probation in the courts. So, I'd like to see Sarpy have till at least January, is my own personal feeling.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. There's a motion and a second to lay over a week. Oh, sorry, I didn't hear, Commissioner Garcia, sorry.
You're good. Just two quick ones, I'll direct to Kim to start with. I'm assuming that technically we could, um, extend the contract again if we wanted to in the very near future. Hypothetically, we come back and wanna do October to December. I'm sure, the second part of my question, that Sarpy County would likely be desirous of doing that? If hypothetically we wanted to extend it again, would you say that's accurate?
You're correct, Commissioner. We could always do another amendment as it get closer to September thirtieth. You can do it for any time period. In our discussions with Sarpy County, yes, they would be more than willing to agree to whatever we need, because right now, they don't have a viable solution other than Douglas County Youth Center.
Okay, so that, to me, is maybe a decent compromise for today, where the opportunity exists to extend it further if by chance hypothetically we wanted to move in that direction in the near future, while at the same time not throwing off kind of the staff plan to renew the current contract to at least September, per Patrick, Patrick's comments, et cetera. So, that's kinda where I'm at on it.
There's a motion, a second, with that motion being to lay over a week. You ready, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, I'm ready.
Motion passes. Commissioners, Kavanaugh, Friend, and Morgan voting yes, Rogers and Boyle voting no, and it passes because we treat abstentions as, uh, basically present not voting, so it's a three-two majority, so motion to lay over passes.
Item. To item three, recognition and proclamations. Item A is a resolution proclaiming May seventh through thirteenth as Correctional Officers Week. Director Myers, is he here? Is he out in the hallway? Okay. I'll read the resolution. Okay. Whereas Douglas County recognized the exceptional challenges all correctional officers and staffs face while conducting their duties on a daily basis. And whereas the offices and staff of the Douglas County Department of Corrections routinely perform acts of heroism and have saved the saved the lives of numerous individuals with little notoriety. And whereas the offices and staff of the Douglas County Department of Corrections continually make our community safer and improve the well-being of citizens by helping those most in need. And whereas Douglas County is grateful that our correctional officers and staff willingly risk their own safety in order to protect the safety of others. And whereas the first week of May endlessly serves as a week to recognize correctional officers and staff, now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners that May seventh through thirteenth of twenty thirteen is recognized as Correctional Officer Week in Douglas County. Their motion and a second from the board. Motion by Commissioner Morgan is a second, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll now move on to item B, which is, uh, a proclamation proclaiming the Cinco de Mayo celebration and Mexico's victory at the Battle of, Puebla? Puebla, in eighteen sixty-two. Commissioner Garcia.
So, of course, we want to invite everyone to come out and check out the Cinco de Mayo Festival. It's actually this upcoming weekend, which confused a lot of people, because Cinco de Mayo was technically last Friday, but the festival organizers are, chose this upcoming weekend of May twelfth, thirteenth to host the festival. So, that is in South Omaha on Twenty-Fourth Street with parade and, of course, a lot of festivities. So, we welcome everybody to South Omaha in District One this weekend for Cinco de Mayo festivities. Commissioner Kavanaugh and I actually worked with, um, Jose Garcia and the Mexican American Historic Society of the Midlands, which is evolving into the South Omaha Museum. This last Friday, we presented them with the laminated fancy proclamation already, so they have a copy of that, and we were participating in the ceremony that they were hosting at the Benson Theater for Cinco de Mayo. So, that part has been done, so right now, I'm just gonna go ahead and do a quick read into the record of the proclamation, and we'll vote from there. So, the proclamation reads, whereas the Cinco de Mayo Festival celebration is one of many events that remind us that America's diversity is America's, America's strength. And whereas on this day, more than a hundred fifty years ago, thousands of French soldiers from one of the world's most powerful armies at the time marched towards the city of Puebla, Mexico. And whereas the farmers and peasants who lived in Puebla were as hopelessly outmatched as they were, as their uniforms were mismatched, however, they were able to hold their ground and ultimately sent the invading army fleeing in the other direction. And whereas the United States has commemorated this battle victory through the Cinco de Mayo celebration. And whereas generations of American, Mexican-Americans have enriched our country and have become a fixed population in our state of Nebraska. And whereas the eighteen sixty federal census shows a twelve-year-old laborer, Mexican-born James Diego, listed as the only Mexican-born Omaha resident. And whereas Omaha Archbishop Jeremiah Hardy commissioned the Augustian Fathers to start a Spanish-speaking congregation in nineteen nineteen. And whereas in nineteen twenty-nine, José Joseph Carrillo founded the Sociedad Mutualista Mexicana of South Omaha, which celebrated the first documented Cinco de Mayo event in nineteen thirty-five at the Butchers and Workman Temple at Twenty-Fifth and M Street. And whereas Mexican-American and Latino culture is now woven into the fabric of this country, which is evident through the contributions of Latinos to our, to our commerce and economy, cultural celebrations, music, literature, food, faith, and much more, from our smallest towns in Nebraska to our larger city and county. Now therefore be of the resolve by this Board of Commissioners that this board hereby celebrates Cinco de Mayo and honors the victory of the Mexican people at the Battle of Puebla, a victory as important in nineteen twenty-three, or excuse me, in twenty twenty-three as it was for the Mexican-Americans in eighteen sixty-two, for people who have embraced and come to love their new home in the United States of America while remembering and celebrating their Mexican heritage.
And I'm assuming that's a motion. Motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
To join my colleague, Commissioner Garcia, in this resolution, and note that he and I also joined in the baseline funding for the South Omaha Immigrant History Museum that served as the host for the Cinco de Mayo Celebration last Friday at the Benson Theater. This comes in a great week for our Mexican-American community and my home neighborhood, South Omaha, where the parade will be held. And I wanna note that Douglas County also provides, I believe, over a hundred thousand dollars in support from our Visitors Improvement Fund to that parade, celebrating this Cinco de Mayo commemoration. This is a great event, honoring a great community. I was glad last Friday, when we had the celebration at the Benson Theater, to be joined on stage, not only by my colleague, Commissioner Garcia, but by a contingent of the ancient order of Hibernians, who were there to note the close collaboration between the Irish-American community and the Mexican-American community, historically stretching back over a hundred years, and pledging that solidarity going forward. We were all immigrants at some point, sooner or later, from someplace, and we all recognize that the Mexican-American contribution to this city, this state, and this nation is significant, and we should recognize that as well. So, I wanna thank my colleague for bringing this forward and say I fully support it and look forward to the parade this weekend. Thank you.
Okay, there is a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Move on to item four, which is, uh, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioners-related matters that are not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha six eight one three two. I have two quick items this morning. First of all, I've spoken before about cultural Marxism and diversity, equity, and inclusion, which has been showing up in our county and city documents lately. Citizens wouldn't know that if they don't dig into the the background of the resolutions and things, and the attachments on the agendas. Do their homework first, but it is there. Well, now in California, they're trying to add another classification into that, and I I've spoke to this before also. We're going to be hearing the word reparations now. And I'm gonna ask this board to keep this out of these halls, because that is cultural Marxism. They are trying to split this country apart with new methods of reverse racism, I guess you could call it. Because we're not still guilty of what happened in the years past. Quite frankly, it was Democratic governments in the South that participated in the slavery, but they didn't invent it either. The United States didn't exist when slavery began. It began clear back in Egypt. So, let's get off of that business, and let's don't have any more celebrations on the courthouse lawn either. The other topic quickly is the Open Meetings Act. Strangely enough, Mr. Lewis there was digging into it a few minutes ago and sort of interrupting the decor of the meeting, because it's posted on a wall. The Open Meetings Act is basically intended for the citizens to be able to attend each and every open public meeting. Whether you call it an open meeting or not's another matter. If you publicize it as so, and you hold it in an office like this, a building that we pay for, it is a public meeting, and it is open, and citizens by intent are enabled to speak on each and every item. Not necessarily every meeting, but on each and every item. Well, tonight, there's going to probably be a bruhaha in Fremont, Nebraska over the use of the Open Meetings Act to try to keep people from speaking on certain agenda items. So, tune in to the news after the seven o'clock so-called special meeting, and then the regular city council meeting after that. So, they'll use a consent agenda and a special meeting to try to keep citizens from having input on a pretty important item. And those people, as well as the people here, need to get straight to the fact that you guys work for us, we do not work for you. Public meetings, you don't tell us we can or can't speak.
Anyone else's citizens' comments?
Hello, Commissioners, Luis Jimenez, twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. I'd like to comment on legislative bill six thirty-seven. To say that I don't think it's going to be passed or considered. I looked at the Nebraska website, and it's been placed on general file, and there hasn't been a vote by the full legislator, which is the bill six thirty-seven would require a public body to allow members of the public an opportunity to speak at each meeting and to repeal the original section. I wanna comment that I think you guys do a good job at letting the citizens of the county participate in your meetings. You are a public body, you're a subdivision of Nebraska, being a county. But in this area, there's other, as Larry would say, there are other public bodies that need to be in compliance or ma- maintain their activity in compliance with the Opens Meetings Act. So, on that point, you know, you you guys have committee meetings, and sometimes there are, there's not four commissioners, there might be two commissioners, there might be three commissioners, but you still allow the public to participate. So, there, I have a confusion as to what you're actually doing at a committee meeting, because I consider that a committee meeting, but then it's called a subcommittee meeting. I think there needs to be clarification on what a subcommittee is, because it also would impact participation in the other public bodies. So, one section of the actual Open Meeting Act, Open Meetings Act that is currently in force is under definitions, terms defined, which is two. Meeting means all regular, special, or called meetings, formal- Meeting means all regular, special, or called meetings, formal or informal, of any public body for the purpose of briefing, discussion of public business, formation of tentative policy, or the taking of any action of the public body. So a meeting does not necessarily have to have a motion to approve or not approve. You can have a meeting and not take any formal action, and it would still be considered a meeting that is under the Open Meetings Act. So those are my two points, that I don't think the legislature is going to change the Open Meetings Act this session. And if they do, either they need to provide clarification on what a subcommittee is, or maybe the Attorney General can on their footnotes, because that definition of what a subcommittee is will impact the participation of anybody who's not a public official. Thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment? Citizens' comment? Seeing none. We'll move on to item number six, which is public hearing. Item A is a public hearing for class number I-125614, license for beer, wine, distilled spirits, on sale only for Pepper Jack Development LLC, doing business as Good Evans. Address 3930 North 203rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska 68022. And manager application for Chelsea R. Leparko. Is she here or online? You're here? Please come down. With that, I will open the public hearing. Any comments for public hearing? If you want to say anything. If you want to say anything. Are you representing her?
Yeah.
You can put your name on the record.
Mike McCallis with Pepper Jack Development.
Okay. Anybody, any citizens want to comment in the public hearing on item A? Seeing none and here online. I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Friend, second about Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll move on to, you're good, sir. Thank you. Item seven, committee discussion and/or action. Item A is the finance committee. Item one is the budget report. I'm assuming that's submitted?
Yes.
We'll move to item two, which is, first of, budget presentations by the Douglas County Public Defender's Office on the department's fiscal year 2324 budget requests, which is $359,019 in excess of the budget target. You want to set the stage, or you want to go? You want to set the stage, or you want to go?
Okay, thank you. Yes, as we're starting into the budget process...
Joe, can you identify yourself?
Joe Lorenz, County Finance Director. As we're starting the budget process, the procedure we have in place is for those offices and departments that come in with a budget request in excess of the target that was sent out, that they will come to the finance committee, held concurrent with the board meeting on a Tuesday, and present to the board the reasons behind their budget request being in excess of target. And the first one we're doing is the Public Defender's Office, and so I'll turn it over to Tom Riley.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much. Just for clarification purposes, I sent you a letter at the end of April requesting $8.1 million, which is obviously over target. And in discussions with Joe Lorenz, he was able to help us whittle this down by getting public property to pay $125,000 for lechtrivers that we had originally included in our budget request, and also indicated that I had included a 4% pay increase effective in January of 2024. And in discussions with Mr. Lorenz, we eliminated that. And as a result, our budget request is $7.7890,305. As is usual, the case with our office, the vast majority of our budget is personnel. We do have some one-time costs that are attributed to this move, including $20,000 to remove the current lechtrivers that are inoperable. In other words, well, they're operable, but they're obsolete, and they can't be moved. And we're going to be charged 20 grand to have those removed from our current space. We also are in need of $20,000 for business cards and printing because our address is different. So when we give out our business card or we use stationery to send letters, we have to have the correct address on it, and that will be an additional 20. I didn't design the building, but each of the office doors has a, pretty much a floor-to-ceiling window in it that maybe takes up about a fifth of the width of the door, and we need privacy, so we need to get some shades for those glass panels, for lack of a better term. That comes in at $17,000. And then we have $3,002 for storage areas for shelving, for various items that we need for everyday, you know, pens, paper, all sorts of other files, things like that. More importantly, and a bigger number obviously, is salaries. And our current starting salary is $70,000 for an entry-level lawyer. As you can see on the graph here, the county attorneys, we checked their salary, and we know that there are two lawyers that have been only lawyers for six months, and they're at 75.6, and the city attorney is at 77,750 after six months. Go to the next slide. Also, to take a look at the salaries of starting pay for our other comparable counties, or at least somewhat comparable, we're at 70. Sarpy's at 75.5. Buffalo County, which is Carney, I guess, 78, and Lancaster 74. These are the people that we're competing with to get entry-level attorneys into our office. First of all, as you know, the statute requires that our lawyers be paid the same as their counterparts in the county attorney's office. That's by statute. You know, I'm not going to quibble over a few hundred dollars, but when it comes to, you know, $5,500, that's a different story. And I suggest that statutorily, we have to get to that number. I think you all know what our office does, what areas we cover, and, you know, some of them are not our statutory obligations, but in an effort to be cost-saving to the county, we take juvenile court cases and we take non-support cases where there's a possibility of a person going to jail, and that's, believe me, it's a cost save to the county, because I believe if we weren't doing them, private attorneys, well, I know that private attorneys would have to be appointed, and I think the rate for them, at least with regard to juvenile court, is raised up to over $100 an hour. So I, in my opinion, the Public Defender's Office, the way it's designed in Douglas County is a cost benefit. That said, we need help. The complexity of cases these days is substantially more difficult than when I started 48 years You know, if you had a DUI case, you'd read a police report that's probably one or two pages, and that was it. Now, even in a misdemeanor DUI case, there's body cam, there's cruiser cam that you have to watch. This is extremely time-consuming. And not to mention the complexity of felony cases with ever-changing DNA techniques, expert witnesses used to combat that, expert witnesses needed to deal with the downloading of cellphones. If you pay any attention to criminal justice, you know that one of the things that police are doing with, in almost every serious case, grabbing every cellphone of every witness, every suspect, every victim, and downloading it. And just to give you an idea of the volume of what is on these things, I had the opportunity to cross-examine one of the experts from the Omaha Police Department about this, and I said, "If you were to put these items on paper, which are text messages, photos, all sorts of things, how much volume, what kind of a volume would we get?" His answer? "It would be the height of the Woodman Tower." Those are the kind of things that we have to go through now to look through for evidentiary purposes. We can't just say, "Okay, well, here's what the cops want to use, and here's what the foresters want to use, and that's good enough." We have to look at everything, because there may be exculpatory evidence there. That's why we're asking for additional lawyers and for additional trial assistants. Samantha Dewitt, to my right, is the one and only trial assistant we have in the office for 55, 56 lawyers, and it's just not feasible for her to handle all of these cases. As you can see on the PowerPoint here, we're talking about like the DNA, cellphones, social media, that kind of thing. And we have to hire experts and consultants, as well as sometimes to be witnesses, and that ain't cheap. Most of the experts that we use are decent human beings and kind of give a PD discount, but many of them are from far away. We have to get them here. We used an expert from Scotland in a recent DNA case that resulted in a very favorable result for our client because of the expertise that this gentleman was able to provide, and we ended up with a very, very favorable result. And it's always been my belief that poor people deserve the same opportunities for expert witnesses as rich people. And these experts are extremely important. As you can see here, even basic juvenile and criminal cases take significantly more time due to proliferation of video evidence, which includes attentive footage from police body and cruiser cams, private video recordings, as well as recorded witness and suspect interviews. Just let me, again, tell you, if you just read the police reports of an interview of a suspect, for instance, you know, it's probably maybe, if they interview him for a while, it's maybe five, six, seven, eight pages, 10 pages. Then you get the video, and it's 18 hours, but for one person. And so the time consumption of lawyer hours that are needed to handle these cases has exponentially increased, as I said, from when I first started, where they didn't have, they didn't video-record witnesses' statements, suspect's statements, they didn't have ring cameras, they didn't have video cameras almost everywhere in the city, and these things all have to be examined by the lawyers and/or trial assistants. That's why I'm asking for two. So of the number that we're over target of 359,285 of it is for two additional lawyers, two additional trial assistants, and an additional secretarial person. We would ask that the lawyers be hired at 75, and that the trial assistants and secretary start off at 45. The caseload that we have, I will say, has been fairly static over the last two years or so. The felony numbers and misdemeanors have not risen or decreased significantly, but as Kim Havakati could tell you, the numbers in juvenile court over the last six months have skyrocketed. The number of cases that we have in juvenile court have increased significantly. As you can see here, that includes delinquencies and also neglect, which we call 3As. There are basically cases where a parent may be in danger of losing parental rights. We take those, we used to do the Guardian and Lightroom because we could wear the white hat, but we found ourselves having a conflict out of so many cases because the parent may often also be charged with child neglect, or child abuse, or sexual assault on a child. And I thought, that's really back asswards, for lack of a better term. So we went over to representing the parents, because then, of course, if they have a criminal case that's associated with their termination of parental rights issue, we can handle both. Go to the next screen. I think I've already dealt with this. Now, to try to give you a little bit of a flavor of what we try to do to save money, as you can well imagine, we have a significant number of clients who are Spanish-speaking. And in an attempt to save costs on translators, we have a number of support staff and attorneys who are fluent in Spanish. And I'm not just talking about situations where they go to court. If you have a client who's a Spanish speaker, and they're either in jail or out on bond, and you have to talk to them, in days gone by, if you didn't have a Spanish speaker, you'd have to hire an interpreter to come into the office with the client, or go to the jail with you, so they could translate for you. We have, we don't have to do that anymore, because we have sufficient number of staff attorneys, including an investigator, or two actually investigators who are Spanish speakers. We have, how many secretaries do we have that are Spanish speakers? Four. And then I think we have five Spanish-speaking lawyers. So that can, and I can't put a number on it, but I can tell you that it's a cost saver. Also, as you probably know, there are immigration consequences to every criminal case, and that is somewhat complex. And we have a team of attorneys in the office, who in addition to their caseload, they are also charged with handling the immigration advisements, because a client may have immigration consequences based on a conviction of the type of offense that they're facing, and they have to be made by the Supreme Court of the United States ruling. They have to be fully advised and made aware of, if you plead or get convicted of this offense, you may get removed from the country. If it's a lesser offense or a different type of offense, you may not necessarily be removed. These are things that are extremely important. There's an immigration attorney... There's an immigration attorney on staff as a professor at UNL, and we have teamed up with him, and he comes up and does a twice-a-year free seminar for us to keep us up to date on all of the latest immigration law. Again, this is the kind of stuff that you may have to otherwise send people to seminars for, to learn, because if you don't do the advisement right, any conviction would be set aside under post-conviction, and more importantly, it would be an injustice to the client. Unlike the county attorney's office, we handle all of the misdemeanors with the city prosecutor's office, and there's probably eight, nine thousand of those a year. The county attorneys do the domestic violence misdemeanors, but they don't do the city ordinance violations, which are numerous. Additionally, the county attorney's office does not do appeals. We do our own appeals. And I'm not knocking the county attorney's office, I'm just saying, this is the reality. If I lose a trial, God forbid, and a person gets sentenced to a lengthy prison term, and we had a trial, we can appeal it. And the attorney general's office takes over for the prosecutors. They handle all the appeals in the state of Nebraska. But we handle our own appeals. We don't have some entity out there that, like some states do, they have appellate defenders' offices. I think that's a bad idea, by the way. I think the person who tried the case is in a much better position to handle an appeal than someone who's reading it for the first time. We have lawyers in the office now, many of whom have clerked prior to coming to our office, clerked for appellate courts across in Nebraska and elsewhere. And they are, we call them our vetting attorneys for appeals. They, when an attorney completes a first version of the brief, we send it to the vetter. They have their own caseload as well, and they go through the brief to make sure that it complies with the rules, et cetera, and that it makes sense. Sometimes, when you're doing your own brief and you were at the trial, you write the brief, and you always want someone else to read it, because you're saying, "Well, it makes sense to me," but it makes sense to someone who wasn't in the trial. And I found that to be extremely helpful. Also, the Nebraska Supreme Court has implemented mandatory e-filing, which has not gone smoothly, shall we say. And it's always kind of a struggle. Basically, what's happening is, we'll file something, and some clerk somewhere says, "Refused," and you have to take it back, try to find out what the heck reason there is for not doing it. It could be something as simple as not having the right font, not having the right spacing, things like that. And it's a new venture right now, and it's taking some time. That's one of the things that these trial assistants would help us with, so the lawyers don't have to spend a bunch of time trying to figure out how to do a clerical fix. Next one. As you know, CLE is a mandatory requirement for all practicing lawyers in Nebraska. And we each have to have ten hours. We do not send our attorneys into out-of-state seminars unless we get a grant or a scholarship for them. We do our own CLEs. We have to put them together. We have to get them approved by the Supreme Court. And that can help comply with the ten hours that are needed. That's a cost savings. If you look around the country, you'll always, if you get any of these criminal defense magazines, whatever, they always have a seminar in Las Vegas, they have a seminar in Miami, they have a seminar in Honolulu. And it's great if you have, you know, an unlimited budget, but it's kind of, I don't think it's very cost-effective, shall we say. And maybe the other thing that I think I'd like you to know about the policies that we have in our office. There are a number of public defender offices, both in Nebraska and elsewhere, who cap their caseload. And once they reach their monthly number, and it's May twentieth, and you've got ten more days, or eleven, I guess, in May, they will tell the court, "We are not going to accept any further appointments because we've already reached our limit." I don't want to do that. I think it's the wrong way to go about things, and that's why I'm asking for these, and another reason I'm asking for these additional lawyers, is that I don't want to have to get into a position where we're putting our lawyers in a bind. As I mentioned earlier, the number of cases a person has, a lawyer has now, is not representative of how much time it takes compared to even ten years ago. Commissioner Boyle, you're a doctor, you know about DNA, and you know, I'm sure you know something about the advances made and the uses in forensics. And like I said, this is, you know, I went to law school because I sucked at math and science, and now here I am trying to figure it out. And, you know, all of our lawyers, we try to train them on this stuff, and it's absolutely vital. The last thing I'd like to say is simply, I know that both the county attorney's office and our office, over the last several years, have had a spate of departures. I lost three experienced lawyers who are becoming professors in law schools. These are people that handled murder cases that I felt comfortable with, and now we're replacing them with newbies. Why are they leaving? Stress, overwork, and pay. And maybe the ability to work from home. We lost several others to private law firms or other, including criminal justice firms. I can't speak for Don, but I know that there's different faces sitting across council table from me than there were a year ago, and I would venture to say that his situation is pretty similar to ours. The only difference is, they get, a lot of their people get put on the bench because they lose them, too. We haven't had that very often, and I'll let you figure out why on your own. So, that's kind of where we're at. I do not take this lightly in asking for these additions and this budget increase. But I think it's necessary, and, you know, some of these licensing fees that we have are going up. We have a thing called Justice Text that helps us transcribe interviews. It's not perfect, but it can be a helpful time saver. We also have a thing called Celebrite, which allows our investigators to download cell phones as well as the police. These are tools that have been necessitated by the advances in forensics and the challenges that we have when we're dealing with serious cases. So, is there any more? Okay. I rest my case.
Okay. Can we get a copy of those, what you presented?
Didn't we?
Yep, we provided copies.
Oh, there's, in the books. Oh, okay, never mind, I was looking at the letter. Thank you, never mind. Looking. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Riley, thanks for doing the due diligence. I know you've been working with finance in order to resolve, you know, flexibly resolve, you know, some of the items that you've been dealing with. You, just generally curious, you were initially asking, Tom, for a four percent across-the-board, I think, across-the-board salary increases. You removed that request based on some of the discussions.
Yes, that would have been effective in January.
Okay. Can you, did the target, and I could talk to Joe about this, too, did the, within your target, did salaries increase at all, or were salaries frozen from last year? So, in other words, did your original request, or did the original target include a base salary increase?
The original, as I understand it, there's kind of a photo of our salaries on a certain date. I'm not sure what the date is, and that is what is provided to you to give us a target. So, Joe could probably tell you the date better than I can as to when that occurs. So, yeah, there's always some salary adjustments in between. People leave, we hire someone, that kind of thing, but it's close. Joe?
Yeah, I could speak to that. What we do is, you know, the commissioners decide on salary increases in December for, you know, non-union people, which also includes the public defender and the county attorney. And so those salary increases are built into their target, but knowing that next January first, there will be another increase that the commissioners will approve in December, that is not what's in his target, and Tom had put in there four percent, and we never know what that's going to be until the commissioners decide. But last December, it was actually a five percent increase that the commissioners decided. So, that will come as a budget supplement, dependent on what the commissioners set as the target increase for non-union employees. So, that's how that works, and that's kind of how we work the budget request to reflect that.
Okay. So...
That's why I removed the four percent, at Joe's suggestion.
So, Tom, we're all dealing with these issues of retention, and you and I have been in meetings, and we've talked about it, and we hear all types of other departments dealing with this stuff. Are we, in the public defender's office, is it at a critical juncture right now? I mean, where are you at as far as authorized, what you would consider an authorized staffing level?
Well, we're fully staffed to where we were last year, but because of the factors I mentioned, we need help. We need a couple of more lawyers and trial assistants. So, I would say that we are, in reality, we're understaffed for the tasks that we're required to perform. Do I think, you know, two is going to be enough? If I thought five I needed, I'd ask you for five. I'm hoping that two will do the trick, at least for the, I would like to think for a couple of years at least, and we'll see how things go. You know, there's so many variables that have gone into this. With COVID, the numbers were skewed because of that, and, you know, as I said, with the many departures that both county attorney and public defender's offices have had, that makes a lot of things more up in the air as far as how are you projecting ahead? You know, if someone that is making a hundred grand leaves, do you hire a lateral hire, about the same person, or do you hire a newbie at seventy, or whatever the starting pay is, knowing that you are going to be losing someone that you can give serious cases to, and hope that you can move people up higher from the staff? Most of the people we lost were in that middle range, which are really important, because they're the ones that have been there maybe eight, seven, eight, nine, ten years, that are now ready to do first-degree murders. They're now ready to do, you know, serious cases that have consequences of literally hundreds of years in prison. The other thing I neglected to mention is, the days of trying a case, a serious case...
No, I said time, wrap your thought up.
Okay. The only thing I would say is, the days of trying a serious case by yourself with one attorney, they're gone. You need to have two or three attorneys on these serious cases. County attorney's office does the same thing. So, that's a good question about staffing, and that's a factor that is, needs to be considered.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. If there's nobody else, you got, okay, sorry. Commissioner Moore?
Tom, I really, and I've said it before, appreciate your passion and effort of your total office and the people that work there. I know you're here on Saturdays some of the time working, and I appreciate that a lot. You mentioned that the increases in the last six months, I think it started a couple years ago, the increases that we're seeing in the crime, especially young people.
Yeah.
And please don't hesitate to disagree with me, but it seems like it's been for the last couple of years we've seen those increases.
You know, statistics can be deceiving. Commissioner Friend was at the last Criminal Justice Management Committee meeting, and typically, there's someone from the police department talking about crime rate, and, you know, there was mention that there's only been one or two homicides in Omaha up until last week or the week before, and that some of these serious crimes have gone down. While that may have some validity to it, the other thing you have to realize is that that's the reported crimes, not the ones that where the arrests are. I don't, I would, it would be more interesting to see how many arrests and charges have gone down. And my evidence shows me that, at least with regard to felonies, they haven't gone down. They've been pretty static throughout, and I'm sure that there are a number of factors that I may be ignorant of, but all I can tell you is, when I look at the numbers of how many cases we're getting every day, those numbers have not decreased in felonies and in misdemeanors marginally, primarily because of these very successful diversion-type programs, knock-on-wood. You know, obviously, if they flunk out, we end up getting them, but they've been pretty good. And, you know, I was here listening to Mike Meyer's presentation on pre-trial release, and they've done a heck of a job on that, and we worked in collaboration with them on that consistently. Martha Wharton over here was involved in all of the programming and how to get that thing up and running. And so there was cooperation among all of us that helped with decreasing the jail population, but not necessarily decreasing the caseloads. I hope that answered your question.
And I want to be sure if Joe or Lori have any, two finance directors, have any questions that they'd like to ask, but I, for one, am, you know, not liking to do it, but supportive of your request.
Thank you.
And I'd state that, and I've been on the finance for the last twelve years, and I know that the information you gave us is very accurate, so I thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Boyle?
Don't ask me any DNA questions, please.
It's coming. So, first and foremost, I just want to say, I'm always blown away by how an attorney crafts the case in front of me, that the way you're able to put it all together is very impressive. So, I like how you're able to, it's your system.
My trial assistant has a lot to do with that.
Very good. But I think it really helps us as commissioners, what you're doing is you're asking for an increase, and it's basically because you're really unable to do the work with the same resources that you've always had, because the work has changed.
Right.
And so I think that's the biggest challenge, is we have to understand, this isn't about you asking for more money, just to ask for more money. It's like the nature of what you do is so different than what it used to be, and it's always changing. But it's impressive how you justify, you explain why. And then, to be honest, what I appreciate the most is the fact that you tell us what cost-savings measures you have taken to try to balance out as much of it as possible. To me, as a commissioner, trying to do what's best for our constituents, which is trying to watch property tax rates and keep that to a minimum, this is the type of argument we need. Anytime someone comes up here presenting their budget, asking for more money, to be honest, that piece of information is what I'm asking for. So, when other departments come up here, if they're asking for requests, I'm going to ask, "What are you doing?" for requests, I'm going to ask, what are you doing to, to, to offset that that's in your power? So, so I truly appreciate that part, that piece the most. I think it makes it much easier to support this. And then just one, just a matter of one thing, why I really respect what we do. It's something, it's something you said. It's where, poor people deserve the same representation as rich people. So we're really in here, we're just trying to make people's lives better, and so, but I just, you couldn't have said it better with that. So I just appreciate you being here and explaining and justifying what, what you're asking for and, and why, and I really appreciate the, the job that you do as public defender and everyone in your office. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Tom, you had said something earlier that piqued my interest a little bit. If, if the public defender's office, and I'm, I agree with you, by the way, if the public defender's office set a cap on the cases it could take, what would, what would, what options, this is a little bit of my ignorance, what options would a judge have at that point? They, they just appoint an attorney and-
They'd have to appoint a private, they would have to appoint a private attorney who would submit a bill to the county for their, for their work.
Which-
And on felonies, it's 125 an hour, and on misdemeanors, I know it was ridiculously low, it was something like 50 bucks an hour, and I, I, I know that that has changed. I just can't recall if it's, I don't want to say it's maybe 80 bucks an hour now for misdemeanors. So it, it's not an option for the court to say, well, public defender's caseload is full, so you're going to have to represent yourself. That's not an option. And there's, there's no one out there that's going to do this stuff for free. It, it, those days are gone. And, you know, large part because of what I was just explaining to you and how work-intensive this stuff is now. It's, it's just, you know, what we, what we see happening a lot is, especially you talked about, or I think Commissioner Morgan talked about kids being involved in serious offenses, and a lot of times, they do it in a group. You know, there'll be four kids in a car, and someone will take some shots, and all four of them are going to get charged, and we can only represent one of the four. So that is the vast majority of what happens with, with private attorneys now. But if we capped it and said, okay, well, all four of them are going to have to deal with. And, and we have an agreement with the county attorney's office that we will take the target defendant. In other words, if there's four kids in a car, and the police believe that one of them is the shooter, and the other three are, one's the driver and the other two are just there, we're going to end up with the person who is most likely to go to trial because they're going to fight, face the harshest possible penalties. So, you know, we'll, Don or Brenda or someone will call and say, hey, you got, you know, four guys coming in on, on a serious case, here's, here's who we think is the, the most culpable, so that's who we take. And that's, I think, is also a cost-saving measure for the county, because if the other three guys either plead guilty, or one of them is going to be a cooperating witness with the state, obviously, the, the cost of handling their case is significantly less than if the, the one who's going to trial. Because you typically aren't going to have to hire these experts, you aren't going to have to do all this, all the work. If you've got a cooperating witness or someone that says, I'm just going to plead, I just want to get this over with. So that, that's how that works. Did that answer your question?
It did, yeah, it did. Is there any, has there ever been a point in time where you were forced, I mean, you've been doing this a little while. Has there ever been a time where you were forced into a situation where you had to do that?
I never did it. I never did it, and in large part because commissioners have come through. When I've asked for help, they've come through and given me the help. I mean, I've had numerous times throughout the years, have lawyers come in and say, my caseload is, I'm, I'm drowning. And what we do on those situations is we try to readjust their caseload and have someone else pick up some of their cases, or not assign them some new cases for a while because they've had a particularly difficult line of clients that are hard to deal with and are very time-consuming. They call, you know, five, six, seven times a day, they're pissed off all the time. That takes, that takes a lot of time. So, and, you know, I'm telling you, this mental health thing, the component of mental health-
One minute.
-is huge, and it has a huge impact on how the criminal justice system works. And when you're talking about things like average daily stay, things along that lines in the county jail, that is a monumental, has a monumental impact on how, how long people stay in jail. If they're not competent to proceed, nothing in court can happen. So they sit and wait to go to the regional center, and we have hearings, and so, you, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Appreciate it.
Um, I would, if there's anybody in the comment that wants to, anybody in the audience that wants to comment on this item, they can. Say none. We'll move on to item three, the monthly fee report from the Douglas County Clerk Comptroller is there in our records. We'll move on to item G, which is human resources. Item one is the weekly personnel report that is as submitted. Item two is legislative items, and there's no more than usual, the report from Kelly Plucker is submitted. Just for the record, noted that last week was budget discussion, and I think they are scheduled, they may begin tonight on second round of budget. With that, we do have a need for executive session for litigation, personnel, legal advice, and contract negotiation.
No personnel.
No personnel. We do have legal, I mean, executive session in for litigation, legal advice, contract negotiation. So they're motioning to go into executive session.
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero or adjourned at 12:21 PM.
Yeah.